All right, ladies and gentlemen, if we could come to order. Okay, it is one o'clock, we're going to proceed with the meeting. My name is Douglas Eichels, I'm the Warren County Attorney. Seated to my right is interim Warren County Auditor David Whipple, and at my left is Warren County Treasurer Julie Doherty. On your screen is the agenda that we're going to follow today. We'll go through some introductions here, some more. I'll tell you the purpose of the hearing. We'll go through a short timeline of events, then there'll be the statements of the parties. Since the Republican Party is the one that has objected to the petition for special election, they'll go first. Representative of the Democratic Party will then get up and give a response. The commissioners will then deliberate, and then we'll give a decision after we've had a chance to deliberate. So, the purpose of the hearing today is obviously to go through the objection of the Central Committee of the Warren County Republican Party. Iowa Code Section 44.7 talks about who the commissioners are. Under that code section, the commissioners are the county auditor, the county treasurer, and the county attorney. The reason that Mr. Whipple is allowed to stay on is basically these three words: "We don't consider that this is a certificate of nomination. This is a challenge to the petition for a special election." So at that point, Mr. Whipple is allowed to make his own decision whether he wanted to recuse himself or not. We've had that discussion yesterday. He has obviously chosen to stay on, and I'll let him explain to everyone why he's done that. I will also say that part of getting to this point, the commissioners met yesterday to talk about the procedure that we're going to follow today. The procedure that I laid out in the agenda is the one that we've agreed to follow. And the reason that we have agreed to follow that procedure is, we consider this essentially an appeal. And if you are appealing a court case to the appellate court, whether that be the Supreme Court or the Court of Appeals, one representative of the parties that are part of the lawsuit or the claim get to come before the court. They get to give a presentation to the court, they're on a timeline, and then the other party gets a chance to respond to that. Five minutes seemed reasonable to the commissioners as we talked about it. They are on a timer. You'll see green when it's good, yellow when they have a minute, red is when they're done. The commissioners have agreed that they may follow up and ask questions after the fact. That does not dig into their five-minute timeline.
Okay.
So those are the rules that we're going to follow today. I want to give just a little bit of background, so everybody knows where we're at. In mid-May, Warren County Auditor Tracy Vanderlin submitted a resignation that was going to be effective for May 31st. The Warren County Board of Supervisors set June 2nd as their application deadline for naming an interim Warren County auditor, and they set June 6th, 2023, as their date to hear from prospective people, and they did that. On June 6th, they selected David Whipple as the interim Warren County auditor. In June, later in June, the Warren County Auditor's office received a petition requesting a special election for the position of Warren County auditor, and on June 26th, the Warren County Republican Central Committee filed an objection to the petition requesting a special election, and that's obviously what brings us here today. Anything that you want to add?
You know, I might add, if you don't mind. I'll turn my mic on here. The decision that I made to stay on this panel, I didn't take lightly, and I thought about it quite a bit. I could very well have stepped down from this and allowed the county sheriff or even the board, the chair of the Board of Supervisors or the county recorder to do this. And I got to thinking about the letter of the law, and here it says, "I shall be one of those members," okay? I'm going to be the auditor of this county, the commissioner of elections, and I need you guys to be able to trust that I'm going to make decisions with integrity. This decision that I'm going to make today is based completely upon, based completely upon integrity, okay? I... I'm sorry?
I'm going to ask that the public not respond, okay? Let's keep order as we go through. Let the people make their statements to you, okay? If you want to have a discussion after the meeting with Mr. Whipple or any one of the commissioners, that's fine, but as we go through this, I would ask that you keep comments to yourself. Let's keep order as we do this, and be respectful as we go through this whole process, please.
Go ahead. Thank you, sir. So, as I was saying, to me, this is not a bipartisan issue. This is an issue of whether or not the petition is going to go forward or the objection is going to be withheld. That is not completely and solely my decision. It is not a decision that I'm going to take lightly. It is either true or it's not true, that petition is valid or it's not valid. And that, it took a whole staff of my office team to help make this decision, not just me, okay? And I had bipartisan people looking at it, a Democrat and a Republican both giving me their opinion about what they thought that this decision was going to be made of, and I'll share it with you in a moment.
Okay, there was an objection to Ms. Doherty also staying on this. The code section that I originally put up, 44.7, doesn't really allow you to recuse yourself if you're not in a position where you have to. So that's why Ms. Doherty has agreed to stay on, because there wasn't a reason for her to recuse herself. Nor does Code Section 44.7 allow for the recusal of oneself. Just because they don't want to make a tough decision or somebody objects to them is not a reason to recuse yourself from being one of the three commissioners today, okay? So with that, I will call up Mr. Kirby.
Okay, I'd like to thank the committee for giving us this time. We really appreciate it. While working on our challenge to this petition for a special election, we learned about the approaches some of those involved in the petition effort had been taken. I spoke with a gentleman who said that someone came to his door with this petition and simply asked him if there should be an election when there's a vacancy in public office. The gentleman agreed with that general idea and signed the petition. When the gentleman found out the facts of the matter and that the supervisors had already chosen an interim auditor, he said he wished he had not signed the petition. This is an example of unintentional partial disclosure, also known as passive deception, and one can only wonder how many others there are that, if they had been present, presented with all the facts, would have declined to sign the petition. We also learned the petition promoters were handing out flyers stating, quote, "Did you know the Warren County Supervisors approved an appointment of an election denier as Warren County auditor?" This was, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we've got comments coming from the public here. This was followed by information about signing this petition. Nothing like using a dog whistle to try to stir folks up. Our final review committee consisted of Mike McCormley Vanderpool and Jim and Rita Fromm. Each challenge was recorded only if all four agreed. After we turned our challenge in to the auditor's office, we learned that there was no Iowa Code requiring that a petition had an authorizing Iowa Code section written on it. Therefore, we are withdrawing the part of our challenge to the petition that had been based on the fact that on each page of that petition, a fictitious Iowa Code section had been written. After we turned our challenge in, we also learned that ditto marks for addresses and dates were actually appropriate. Yesterday, we reviewed each page of the petition and found that there were 27 occurrences of ditto marks on which our challenge had been solely based. We credited those 27 occurrences back to the petition, which resulted in a total of 2,291 petitioners listed on the petition. However, this is still 93 petitioners short of the required minimum of 2,384. Consequently, this petition failed to obtain the minimum number of petitioners, and according to Iowa Code Section 331.306, is not a valid petition. Illegible signatures constitute the bulk of our challenges. It has been suggested that such signatures may actually be determined by looking at the accompanying address. According to this approach, if one knows who lives at that address, then it might be possible to determine whose signature precedes it. But all sense of fairness and objectivity is thrown out the window by this approach. Whether one's illegible signature is accepted or not will then be determined solely by whether the person reviewing the petition knows who lives at that particular address, although that determination could be complicated if there were multiple residents at the address. But if the reviewer does not recognize that address, then the person with the illegible signature is out of luck. Fairness and objectivity require that a valid signature stands on its own and be legible even to someone who does not know the residence of the accompanying address. And ideally, it should be two or more people who agree on the status of a signature. As I noted earlier, we required four people to agree in order to determine the status of a signature. Our challenge to this petition is based on the petition organizers' failure to obtain enough petitioner signatures, as required by Iowa Code Section 331.306, which therefore makes this an invalid petition. It is unfortunate for those who signed the petition that the efforts of the petition organizers were not enough to get a sufficient number of petitioners. The petition organizers followed the law in this petition effort, as did we in showing the insufficiency of their effort. Nevertheless, the voters of Warren County will be able to express their opinions when they cast their votes for auditor in November of 2024. Thank you.
So, are there any questions? Ms. Doherty?
Right. Thank you, Mr. Kirby, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. McCormley?
My name is Shayla McCormley, and I'm here on behalf of the petitioners to respond to the objection that has been brought to the petition for an election for the county auditor. To preserve our record, I will say that we do object to the auditor's decision to stay on the panel, and we would note that despite that opinion, we think it is improper and taints the decision of this opinion. Given the withdrawal from the objection, we only have one large issue to discuss, and that is whether the signatures, whether the signatures are valid, based on the specific objections to each individual signature. What's important to look at first is the code section. The objection claims that the signatures aren't legible, or addresses, or there's issues with the dates. But looking at Iowa Code 331.306, there are only three issues, three items that need to be on the petition. Legislators know that there's other things that can be added, but all they require is meeting the 10% threshold of voters in the last general election for governor or president. Do they meet the threshold? Number two, you have to list out total signature, you have to get those out, signature, statement of a place of residence, which is not defined, and the date on which it is signed. There's no form that must be used, and there's no other requirements be listed to validate each signature. The objectors claim that we need 2,384 signatures. There was an outpouring of support, and 3,496 signatures were submitted. The Board of Supervisors reviewed the petition and accepted it on its face as valid. Looking specifically at the objections, they want to invalidate 1,232 signatures. I may be off by a 27, because I'm not sure how the ditto marks fall into the duplication. However, these objections are frivolous. They talk about needing to be able to read the signature on its face. Had the legislature wanted to, they could have required a printed name. They did not. It is not a requirement to have a printed name, and when people sign, they sign in cursive. Some is legible, some becomes a little sloppier. You also have to verify that you're a resident, and you list out your address. So regarding the 952 people that are claimed to be illegible petitioners, we have provided the panel with about 700 pages of documents supporting and specifically responding to some of the claims. By person, each signature, we pulled up the property ownership, not required to be a voter, but the easiest publicly available database. And we show that when you match up the name with the address that was provided, that you can then find that they were valid signatures. Now, no, you do not have to provide any other affidavits of signatures individually as you would if you were voting, but this is to show that there are sufficient number of electors who want to call a special election. And I will say that the case law in Iowa is clear, the substantial compliance, and always voting in favor of democracy, in favor of elections, and in favor of the voters being heard is where the law has always gone.
Right.
In terms of illegible petitioners, you will note that they were, as we reviewed and provided the updated information, we were very careful. If there was any question on if it was legible, we didn't include it. We provide 618 verifications, which far exceeds about 498 more than we need to have a valid petition. With a few more days, give you a few hundred more, but just the basic public records, we're able to provide those. Iowa law allows, in certain circumstances, people to sign with X's. If you're unable to fully sign your signature, where would that person fall here? Would they be not counted because someone decided that they couldn't read it, and then they would then also not be able to have their voice heard on if they want an election? In terms of the address allegation, 216 objectors asked to be disqualified for illegible, illegible, incomplete, or out of county addresses. Well, you'll see that whoever did the objections either is not familiar with the boundaries of Warren County or is a little intellectually dishonest. Anything that listed Des Moines or West Des Moines was almost kicked out in a wholesale, despite the fact that both city limits come into the county. Those are also, again, verified and provided. Only people who were eligible to vote in Warren County signed the petition. There were more than enough. Looking at those, you have about 498 extras.
Okay, I got a couple of questions for you. You said that you searched through 600 and some of your signatures to find out how many were valid, and did you find any that weren't valid?
Yes.
Under what criteria?
There were a couple different criterias. There are a few that were dated prior to the appointment, those should not be counted. But in the few days that we had, we were doing the affirmative to get back the extra 120 that objectors claim were missing, and so we did not include those in our verification. Additionally, there are about five individuals who listed their zip code in the date section. Those five shouldn't be included, and they're not part of the additional 600 we provided.
And how many of those signatures were done before the appointment of May? You said the date was before this appointment, right? So could you tell me how many that were?
I don't have the exact number. We've had a couple of days to verify.
Could you tell me then, why would somebody start a petition against something that hasn't happened yet?
Well, once you know that there is an opening, the voters have a right to decide they want to have an election. Somebody signed ahead of time, not valid under Iowa law.
Under the law, you have 14 days from the appointment in order to gather signatures for a name. The signatures that we found, and a lot of these were done from May, even some of them June, an entire page where somebody's out petitioning the public. To sign a petition against what? I don't, I don't quite understand that. That part bothers me a little bit about the integrity of this situation.
You know...
You know, I understand and I completely support the right of the public to go out and petition and get signatures for any issue. I love that. It is definitely our democratic process, and it must remain. Why somebody would do that without knowing who the appointer is, it already makes me question the integrity of the entire thing.
You know what? It's the opposite. It's the opposite because it's not the person who is appointed. It's the fact that the voters have a right, under the law, to do a petition, and the voters of Warren County want to decide who their auditor is. They didn't want to wait or decide, wait for the supervisors to appoint someone. And it's their right to disagree that someone gets to be appointed and hold seat for another year and a half who has not been elected. It is even more legitimate because it's not about an individual. It's about the right to have a democratic process and the right for the voters to elect their person.
I understand. Thank you. That's a very good point. I do agree, but there is law, 69.14A2. It specifically says that any signatures signed before an appointment will not be valid. So the unfortunate thing is, the unfortunate thing is that those things, I want everybody's signature to count. That's why I'm telling you. Everybody's signature should count, okay? We cannot by law include those signatures on this petition. That is a...
Stop.
Ladies and gentlemen...
Ma'am.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, okay? This isn't a chance for everybody to start yelling, okay? There's a representative here speaking, she's doing a very good job of engaging with Mr. Whipple, okay? It's a process. Let these two engage in the process, please. This isn't something that, if you were in court, you would be allowed to do, okay? Consider it the same, please, okay? Give it the respect that it deserves as we go through this. Let them engage and have a conversation with one another about what they want to talk about, please.
Kinda, may I respond to that point?
Absolutely.
And your question is, or your statement is that those signatures shouldn't count. You're right, we conceded it. 600 extras that are valid, that fill the gap of what the objection claims are 97 missing. Those don't count. That is the letter of the law, just like your recusals, what we believe is the letter of the law, and the fact that legibility is not a factor.
I agree with that. I'm just saying, the unfortunate thing is that those unfortunate people that signed that petition had a voice, and they no longer get to put that voice out there. That's the important part to me. When we're, and I'm going to say this to both parties that are doing petitions in the county, let's let everybody's voice count. Let's do our best to do a better job about making sure that we follow the letter of the law. The 331.306 and the 44.7 don't give us enough information, unfortunately, on the rule of law of what qualifies a signature. How could you verify a signature if you can't read it? That's the problem. And I know there's no law that says you can't do it, or says that you can't use it. The unfortunate thing is that we need our legislators to help with this law, and I think that Steve said that, you might have said that as well. So that's the reason that I made the statement right there. There was 25 or 30 some signatures that were that way. Let's make sure everybody's signature counts next time. That's what I'm saying for Warren County, please.
I completely agree. And you know what else? You just said everyone's vote should count, so let's hold an election, just like... And I will also say that while this code section is not completely clear, the Supreme Court has been clear, and they have talked about substantial compliance and to always err on the side of the electors being heard.
I agree with that. That's it. Thank you.
Julie, any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McCormley. All right, I think the commissioners have, are going to announce where they're going to be. We're going to, before we ever take a vote, I'm going to allow each, Mr. Whipple, Ms. Doherty, and myself, to go ahead and tell you kind of where we're coming from, and then we'll take a formal vote after the end, okay? And I'm going to ask you again, please be respectful. You can disagree with whatever any of us have to say. That's your right, okay? Your right to be disrespectful is, has stopped a long time ago, and there's no point, there is no point for what has gone on today. Let these people speak. You can disagree with them all you want. You can have a discussion with them after the fact if you disagree with them. But please, just let them speak and say what they need to say. Thank you.
Mr. Whipple?
Okay, I first want to explain the process that we used in my office there in order to verify the petition or validate the objection. I had a lot of conversations with our Secretary of Elections there, Wes Hickok, 17 years doing elections for Iowa. And, you know, he said basically, the auditor's job when you receive a petition is not to go through the signatures and verify the dates and that sort of thing. We didn't spend any resources doing that. Our job was to take it for face value, okay? So we counted the numbers on there, we gave them a receipt, we made sure they gave it to us in the proper way, which requires them to bound it, bind it. We gave them rubber bands and that sort of thing so they could do such a thing. And then we made copies of it and made it available to the public, and anybody had 14 days to come in and examine this petition. It's up to the, you guys in the public, to verify what, whether or not those are valid signatures, whether they live in the county, just like the code says, whether they're able to vote in our election, and if it has a date and a signature. Once again, there's not a lot of code and information in there about what qualifies a date to be a perfect date or a qualified date. Does it have to have the year behind it? Can it have tick marks behind somebody that wrote the same day just above it? There's all of these reasons that some of you in the public that brought it back in, the Republican Party went through it, and they say, "That's not a valid date." So we discussed amongst ourselves, well, would you know? What about you? You're an employee, you're a citizen of this county. Would you accept that as a date? And we agreed, yeah, we probably would. But what about when, you know, somebody abbreviates Des Moines and they say DSM, or if they abbreviate Indianola and say IND? I said, "Let's call the post office and see if they would deliver that letter." And we did, and they said, "Yes, we would deliver that letter, as long as it has the zip code on it." They'll do their best to make sure that that letter gets to where it's going, and it's the way that we attack this petition, okay? And the objection. So I brought in a Republican named Pat. She's been doing our write-in ballots for longer than even Tracy Vanderlin has been in this office, so 30 years. She's used to reading everybody's signature and trying to verify, who is that write-in person? So it made sense, and I'm a absolutely fantastic woman, went through it for a couple of days, and she came back with the objection. She said, "David, I'm done. I found 92 signatures that I don't agree." So out of the 960, some that the Republican Party went through and they say they can't read it, she says, "I know kind of a little bit better on how to read signatures because I've been doing it for 30-some years." So we take that away from the 900 and something, right? And then she said, you know, as far as the addresses, she said, "I found 126 that I would agree with because maybe it didn't have Avenue after it, or maybe it didn't have the apartment number." I don't, I don't remember all of the criteria, but she said, "I could find that place. I'm pretty certain that I could out of 126." You take away that, there's 90 left. And then she said, "As far as the dates, when somebody puts a tick mark behind something, I don't count that because I know and understand what they're saying." And the important part of this is that the people that signed that petition, they have a voice, and just because they put a little tick behind a today's date or whatever. She did disagree with the people that signed the petition before the appointment went, and so we took those out. Pat came up with the, and she's the Republican, she says, "I agree, there are 3,187 names that are on that petition, okay? There's only 2,384 that are necessary for that, so we didn't have an issue there." Now, I had Jane, a Democrat, come in, and absolutely fantastic woman, knows a lot of people in this community because she was a schoolteacher for 30-some years. And she says, she knows a lot of these people. She went through, the Democrat went through the entire petition, and I was surprised to find that Jane actually found a little bit more, I'm sorry, less issues. So she came up with 3,031 using the same criteria. So 3,187 signatures that the Republican person countings came up with, and the Democrat comes up with 3,031. That, that is fantastic. I mean, I mean, it really shows you that these people weren't there by party to say one way or the other. They were there doing their job, and they're doing it well, and they know a lot of people in the community, and I completely trust what they did. So this is what I'm going to bring to you. I think, I agree, I'm glad that Steve brought it up, that the code or the wrong code or a letter this way and that way should disqualify an objection or a petition. I think people knew what they were signing, I really do. I think there might have been a few that might have been misled, like Steve shared the example, somebody knocking on his door. I don't think it was 1,000 people that didn't know what they were signing, and so to me, it's a non-issue. And there really is no rule of law. And there really is no rule of law against that. It doesn't require it to be on the petition. For some reason, the Secretary of State puts a spot for it on the petition, which opens up some issues for having a problem. What I'm going to ask, as I mentioned before, is that if we're going to do petitions, let's do our best to make sure you can read those, to make sure the dates are right. We want your vote to count. We want your signature to count. It's important, and we also want to be able to verify that that person lives within the county, because if this was only a petition with 200 signatures, that would be a lot more important, I think, because every single name needs to count to get those 200. If you take one away, that already just eliminated what we're doing with that petition, and this democratic process needs to remain as part of our government. This will be the reason why I make my vote the way I do.
I looked at every challenge signature personally, and I found 130 to be legible, in my opinion, and verifiable by the address. I agree with what has already been said about addresses. I think if the United States Postal Service would deliver it, that it should be counted. I found 105 of those. So 235 is the only ones I found that were actually challenged that I would disagree with.
All right, I'm going to start off my remarks by saying thank you to Mr. Kirby. Thank you, Ms. McCormley, for your presentations today. I appreciate it. I appreciate the time, effort that you put into it. I would thank Mr. Whipple for the time that he's taken and his staff. I would also thank Ms. Doherty for that. I also thank my office. I had Assistant County Attorney Don Bowman work on it. I had my first assistant, Alex Crabbe, work through this, and I also had several of my staff members work through this. So the process that we employed was, we searched through the law, see what the law said. We read through case law to see what the case law was. My staff looked through addresses to try to see if they could verify what, from a signature that they read. I agree with what everybody has said with regard to signatures. I don't take a hard look at signatures because I agree with something that was stated earlier, an X can be a signature. So I'm not going to disqualify somebody because I can't read their signature. We're not going to get into signature games as we go through elections in this county if I have anything to say about that, okay? So I would ask that everybody remember that, okay? The whole point of this, being here today, is the process, okay? And the process has worked, and everybody should be proud of the process. The Board of Supervisors did nothing wrong when they selected Mr. Whipple as the interim county auditor. The process allows them to do that, okay? The process also allows for the people within 14 days of his appointment to say, we don't agree, we want to have an election. And that's what happened, and that's the beauty of our system. Last weekend, I moved my son to Washington, DC, so he could begin working on his doctorate at George Washington University, and I spent time walking around Washington. I spent time in Colonial Williamsburg. I spent time in Jamestown, okay? And you walk through those places, and you cannot help but understand why we are here today and why our system is beautiful, okay? And why we're the most special place in the world. You have Jamestown where people originated into this country, where they landed. You have Colonial Williamsburg, which is the heart of our fight for freedom, right? And you have everything that goes along in Washington, including our tour of Arlington and people that died, so that we could have this, okay? So the system works. I appreciate everybody, the time that they put into it. I appreciate all the work that the people did in getting signatures to get to this point. I, as I said, I don't take a hard look or a hard line on signatures. We verified addresses. There are some signatures that were clearly done before June 6th, when the Board of Supervisors appointed Mr. Whipple. Those clearly are out. There is clearly no, there is no doubt in my mind that there's sufficient number of signatures in this case to warrant having an election, okay? So with that, I will ask the chairman, the commissioners to take a vote. Mr. Whipple?
I see we have an election.
Ms. Doherty?
I agree.
Okay, and I also vote that we have an election.
Nice, nice job.
Okay. Okay, just so everybody understands where we go from here. As a part of our planning process, we talked about how this is going to look. I'm going to give you a preview of what the commissioners are going to recommend to the Board of Supervisors. So the Board of Supervisors are going to meet probably on July 11th, if I have my dates right, and at that point, they will presumably authorize to have an election, okay? It cannot happen 32 days before that. That's the out, that's the minimum time that's given. The commission is going to recommend to the board that the election be on August 29th. That will give the parties sufficient time to have their conventions, figure out who they're going to run on each side, and then we're going to vote on August 29th, presumably, okay?
Yeah, I think August 29th is going to be a good date.
Okay. Okay. I want to again thank everybody for being here, and with that, I'm going to adjourn.